I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Cincilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner. Alderman Randall. Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigant.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wigginton.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
Aldermen Bitner and Randall are excused. Roll call of Department Heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner. Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Hor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Bellevue.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole. Director of Waste Water Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here. Jason Poole's excused, but John Hartman's here in his place and Garrett Harner will be here in just a few minutes. At this time for everyone who's able, if you'd please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. There's no public hearing this evening, so at this time I will open public participation. If you decide you want to say something this evening, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. Once you're called on and recognized, come to the microphone, state your name, try to keep your comments to two to three minutes, and try to keep it on something that's on tonight's agenda or for sure at least city business. So I will now open public participation. Anyone? Gentlemen in the back of the room.
Stuart Lannert, Bellevue, Illinois. Union School Project, they got a St. Louis contractor and St. Louis workers. I talked to one of the workers down there and he said, "Yeah, we got all these places and they always want us to work in Bellevue, shop in Bellevue," but they go hire an out-of-state contractor and their workers. And the fences around there are just expensive aluminum fences. They're not going to be useful other than a decoration because they're open at both And I got a feeling that they're using new materials and the workers are not too familiar with this. And the building is really not to provide much more classroom space. It's mostly for the administrators and the teachers, lounges and whatnot. I was told that by somebody on the big shot up at the school administration office or wherever. And Fisher's Restaurant, you could probably get it for around $500,000. Evidently, the $800,000 deal fell through and other, it's about under $600,000 now, but it might go to $500,000. And you probably bought Bellevue on to buy that. They seem to have a lot of money to throw around and make a homeless shelter out of it. And I hope that new restaurant on 20th and West Main gets a little more support than Mike Bitner's restaurant. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else this evening? Well, hearing none, I will close public participation. We will now go into presentations, recognitions, and appointments. The first thing tonight I want to make mention of, as we do always the first meeting of every month, will recognize the character word of the month, caring, meaning being compassionate and showing others you care. And I know the staff in a lot of different meetings we go to hear us talk about character. And it is extremely important that we all follow and have good character. At this time, it's kind of a bittersweet moment. I guess that's why he kind of thinks is surprised we got him back here tonight, but sometimes you've just got to leverage their wives. I'd like to call forward retired Lieutenant Colonel James Sparker, our Assistant Police Chief of 30 years as a police officer. And Jim, how many were you Assistant Chief? Nine, eight, seven?
I don't know. Sam Wilder.
Come on forward. We want to get your front side. Anyway, this is presented to you on behalf of the City and Police Department. A little kind of trail over here, and at the Boy Scouts, we call this the Eagle Trail. In police work, we're going to call this here rank progression. And you got a long way up there. And it's, ladies and gentlemen, this is a beautifully displayed box, shadow box, I guess you'd call it. From the time he was patrolman to sergeant to lieutenant to captain to assistant chief, he's had them all. And he had 30 years of impeccable service to the city of Bellevue. And Jim, you needed to come here tonight because we needed to officially thank you. You know, the top two people are administrative positions that the mayor of cities appoint with the city council's approval. And these two worked together for a long time and consequently worked with my office daily. And one of them always was being called because there's a lot of things that just are community issues that aren't always issues where we're going to arrest somebody, but we're trying to work on quality of life, we're trying to work on so many things. And Lieutenant Colonel Sparker, you got this? Lieutenant Colonel Sparker. He was the guy out of times, either when chief was off or chief was busy or whatever, was the guy that I called and pestered many times for those very important things. So Jim, I just tell you, on behalf of the city attorney, city council, the fellow Department Heads that worked with you at so many meetings and all of us, we say sincere thank you. We wish you well. I know you've got a new little gig. You're working with School District 201. And we're happy about that because we're happy to see your experience shared in the schools. That's big also. So we congratulate you. Don't leave yet. But thank you. I'm sorry. We worked together for years and years and years before we were ever in a position as a administrator or anything like that. We worked on the streets together. He taught me things that I did not know. He was here supporting. Then after that, I became the sergeants together. We went to the union together. I was the president, he was the vice president. I was a lieutenant, he was my sergeant. We just always worked together all the way up. And we've always had a connection, it's like a synergy. And I truly miss that. He could think, he could finish what I was thinking. He knew where to go with these things. I could say, "Hey, I mean, I got that." And he would have. And so we worked very well together. My new Lieutenant Colonel, Matt Icecamp, we've been together for, we're working. And we are finding out that we have a lot in common, we're doing things together, and so we're going to go forward with that. This man worked with me for years and we were friends as far as with our families and everything else. Our cooking, just, I didn't talk more about cooking than talking about cooking. We were good friends together, so I am just very happy to him again. You and I have the effect of the six earth. Would you please come forward? I'm going to let your cousin actually present it to you. I thought this was to pay off for conversations you had. I tell you, every wife of a police officer or city employee out here knows that there's a lot of, or any wife of a mayor knows that there's a lot, that a lot of sacrifice is on. And I just, on behalf of the city, we say thank you to you and your kids. I know, I'm in the family and our spouses, et cetera, stand up. So. We are in the midst of seeing quite a few retirements. Jim started it off and I guess in late May, or I don't know, somewhere in there, he had his last day and he had some vacation he burned off and then he was done. We've seen several more. I know today I heard on the radio was Parrish Sergeant, Master Sergeant Parrish Marshall's last day of 25 years. There's several more in the works and I don't want to speak out of turn and say something that I wasn't supposed to say yet, so I'll be quiet about the rest of them I think I heard about. But there's quite a few retirements that have happened or will happen between now and the end of the year. And all I can say, 25, 30 years, somewhere in that mix is a long time, especially in this field. And my father was Bellevue Police Officer, 25 years. He retired as a sergeant. I was only a police officer a very short time. But I will just tell you that they and their families go through a lot and we're very appreciative of all of them. We ask a lot, but we're extremely proud of them. So to all of you, we're going to get into the meeting in just a moment and you're going to see a couple promotions, so you're going to start to see some of the youthfulness start to advance here in the next few moments. So my thanks to the Sparkers and to all of you for being here tonight who are here on their behalf. We move on to the regular portion of the minutes of the last meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council minutes, meeting July 16th and July 30th, that special meeting. Motion by Alderman Dittelman, section second by Alderman Schaefer, to receive and file both sets of minutes as in your packet. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to the claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,777,103.59 and the payroll in the amount of $920,678.37. Do I hear a motion?
I make your motion.
Motion by Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear any additions or corrections to the payroll and disbursements? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. I now would ask for a motion to receive and file the city attorney's report dated August 2nd, 2018. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Gah. Any additions or questions about that report? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'll ask now for a motion to receive and file the treasurer's report of June 2018 and the statement of cash and investment report of June 2018. Motion by Alderman Cincilla, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any additions or corrections to that, those two reports? All in favor of receiving and filing those two for audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to the Board of Police and Fire Commission. Much of what the rest of you are here, many of you are here tonight for the second phase of the Police Department recognition. At this time, I would ask for a motion, I'm going to yield to the Chairman of the Committee from Police and Fire Committee, Alderman Johnny Anthony, and ask him if he would agree to make the motion to promote Lieutenant Mark Heffernan to captain effective tonight, or Tuesday, August 7th at 12:01 a.m. Included in that motion would be to promote Sergeant William Hurling to lieutenant, also effective tonight and tomorrow, midnight, August 7th, 2018 at 12:01. And then included, the last phase of that would be to promote Officer Wayne Keys to sergeant effective Tuesday, August 7th, 2018 at 12:01. Would you make that a motion?
I will, Your Honor. I'd like to read them and have them do it as a group, if I can.
Motion from the Police and Fire Committee to promote Lieutenant Mark Heffernan to promote
Lieutenant Mark Hefferman to captain, excuse me, and make that effective on August 7th at 12:01. Motion to promote Sergeant William Bill Hurling to lieutenant effective Tuesday, August 7th, at 2018, at 12:01. And a motion to promote Officer Wayne Keys to the position of sergeant effective Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, 12:01. I so move.
And motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Barfield. Any questions or comments? I'd like a roll call vote on these promotions.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chief, you want to introduce these three for us? Yes. Come on forward, gentlemen. Come on up. Come on up here where they can see you. You're allowed to get in the game. Chief, you got their, I got all of the things that they're going to leave and tear on their beds. We're going to hand them out to them. I will start here first. Captain. You already got them signed as well. You know, we worked together, we started together, so we got a lot of issues as well. I'm very impressed with these guys. This is the new face of the department. It's everything, we're an institution. People leave institutions, but they remain. So as things change, you're seeing the new face of leadership coming in. I'm very excited about them, very happy. They've been doing an excellent job for us. I want to tell you that I will not put a burden on them to speak, but if somebody got something to say, I'd be very pleased. As I just mentioned a moment ago, there's going to be a lot of changes, a lot of retirements and more promotions will be coming. And we're excited it happens. And we thank the ones going out and we challenge you. But I will tell you, we need good leadership, we need outstanding character, and we need it probably in this world we live in today more than ever. So I challenge you, I look forward to working with you, Chief and I, and Assistant Chief Icecamp, and there's a lot of exciting times ahead, so we look forward to your new leadership roles. Thanks. Thank you. Well, that's the bittersweet part of seeing Sparker leave, but seeing the three new ones promoted, that's exciting. And now we've just got to get caught up and get some more into the academy and get them hired because it's a challenge. We move on to 11B on the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding for school resource officer at Safe School for three years effective August 2018. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Gah. Do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Pusa.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. I now ask for a motion, also coming from administration, to approve an agreement between CGI Communications, Inc., CGI and the city of Bellevue, an agreement for the 2018 community video program at no cost to the city. What this is, the Illinois Municipal League has used this firm for some new videos to tell the story about the municipal league. And I got to see the recent production a couple weeks ago when I held the summer board meeting here, and it was excellent. I've met with this young lady a couple times. We had a conference call once or twice now. And they won't charge us, they'll try to get some advertisement from locals, but we can use this as a marketing tool with real estate firms, with our schools, with people from Scott Air Force Base moving in. We can help use this as a way to help market the city of Bellevue. So I'm excited about this. You'll be hearing more about it, but I do want to make sure Garrett reviewed the contract that they bring forward to us, and he's fine with it. So I wanted to make sure that the council knew what we were doing. So is there someone willing to make a motion? Alderman Schaefer, second by Pusa. Any discussion on this? I guess since it is a contract, I'd ask for a roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a number of zoning board of appeals recommendations coming from the zoning board. I think all of them were pretty much unanimously approved. Is there any of them you want separated? Any of them separated? Let's do that one. We're going to separate the one because Jane has some stipulations to add, and that's to the 11C8. So if I can get a motion to read by title, read these by, read these as a group, 11C1, 11C2, 11C3, 11C4, 11C5, 11C6, 11C7, skip 8 for a second, and 11C9.
And 10.
If I can get a motion to read all those zoning recommendations as a group, I would entertain that right now. Mary Steele, and second by Roger. Everybody understand we're asking to have them read as a group? Everybody approved to have them read as a group? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, go ahead and read them as a group and then we'll have a final vote.
11C1, 28 June 18, Kevin Bous, a request for a special use permit to operate a storage building at 1024 Carlisle Avenue, parcel number 08240300025, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.515, Ward 7. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11C2, 29 June 18, Kevin Bous, a request for an area bulk variance to reduce three drive aisles from the required width of 25 feet to 20 feet wide, respectively at 1024 Carlisle Avenue, parcel number 08240300025, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.570, 162.439, Ward 7. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11C3, 34 June 18, Dana Grabey Sage Style, a request for a use variance to operate a consignment store at 6500 West Main Street, number 112, parcel number 07120210024, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 113.001, 162.570, Ward 8. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11C4, 38 July 18, Zales LLC Casa Maria, a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining at 100 North High Street, parcel 08220327014, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248, 162.400, Ward 2. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. LC5, 39 July 18, Faith Family Life, a request for a use variance to operate a church at 6500 West Main Street, suite 220 to 224, parcel number 07120210025, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.247, 162.248, and 162.570, Ward 8. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11C6, 40 July 18, Solve Your System, a request for a use variance to allow the retail sale of refurbished electronics at 2331 Old Collinsville Road, Suite A, parcel number 08140105030, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 113.001 and 162.570, Ward 1. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. 11C7, 41 July 18, Grace Mancy, The Wine Garden, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at 1780 East State Route 15, parcel number 14060300036, located in a C4 commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.278 and 162.515, Ward 6. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only. 11C9, 43 July 18, Kevin Bous, a request for a special use permit to establish a metal building larger than 150 square feet at 1024 Carlisle Avenue, parcel number 08240300025, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 7. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval with the outer perimeter being masonry walls. 11C10, 44 July 18, Libation Lounge, Lodge, sorry, Lodge LLC, Curran Culture, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at 6401 West Main Street, parcel number 07120213027, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 4. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve those zoning cases as just read by our city clerk, 11C1 through 11C10 withholding 11C8 for just a moment? Alderman Wigginton, second by Dittelman. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of having these recommendations approved by the zoning board and have the proper ordinances drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And for those folks who are here, we still have to pass the ordinance in a couple minutes, so don't rush off yet. At this time, we move on to that item we skipped over. I'd ask for Alderman Pusa, would you want to make the motion and add a couple stipulations?
Sure. I'd like to make the motion for 11-C8 on Charles Cove JC Auto Sales, a request for a special use permit to allow used motor vehicle sales at 1900 West Main Street, parcel applicable to zoning code 162.248, 162.51542. To this, we talked to Mr. Colvin. This is for all the benefit of everyone. It didn't happen at zoning. So to this, we want to add the condition for 1900 West Main Street, 42 July 18, Charles Cove JC Auto Sales. In addition to the number limited of no more than 40 vehicles to the lot, he agreed to this, provide additional lighting on the site, number one. Number two, cars on the site must be operable. Number three, provide a fence area in the western edge of the building for outdoor storage. Ensure vegetation on the site is properly maintained and provide bollards or some sort of means to separate the lot from the sidewalks. These are mine, these are things he agreed. sidewalks. These are mine. These are things he agreed, we talked about it, to improve the quality of the business and to see its success. So this I so move.
So we have a motion by Alderman Pousa, who's recommending this coming with those stipulations added. Alderman Hazel's seconding it. And are there any other questions? We met with Mr. Colvin, I went out there too with Anissa and I, we went out there with Jane today, and he was very cooperative and very willing, and I think the, we want him to be successful. We know that just down the street, Lindenwood's doing great things. We know that one of the businesses across the street is about to make a major investment of improvements, and we just want to make sure that, you know, that we don't take for granted some of these issues that sometimes if we don't talk about them, then you say, well, why didn't we specify? So everybody understands the additions that we put in there? With that being said, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll come back for the ardenances for all of them in a few minutes. This time, we go to 11D, the Planning Commission. Alderman, Dittelman, you want to do the first one, 11D1?
On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a motion to approve 11-D1, Flawless Foundations Incorporated. The site plan and architectural elevation for an equipment storage office building at 123 Tower Plaza Drive, parcel number 08-26-0-405-014, located on 2.58 acre D1 Light Industry District Parcel, Ward 6. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with the following stipulations as foreword. The developer worked with the staff regarding fence material and on the western edge of the property. The developer worked with the staff regarding locations of the sign. And three, the developer worked closely with the wastewater department regarding the vehicle maintenance use on-site. And four, the developer worked with staff regarding ensuring the trash enclosure complies with the City of Belleville code.
Motion by Alderman Dittelman with those stipulations seconded by Alderman Gah. Any additions or corrections or concerns? Once again, because of all those stipulations, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve, you want to go ahead? Alderman Dittelman, I'm going to cut in front of you here, let you read.
On motion 11-D2, the villa's of Hollybrook Phillips Investment, site plan, architectural elevation, and landscape plan for an assisted living slash memory care facility on 11.644 acre A1 single-family residence, District Zone Parcel, located at the northwest quadrant, the intersection of Frank Scott Parkway and 11th Street. And this is Ward 8. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval.
We have a motion, we have a second by Alderman, Wellington. Do we have discussion? All in favor of this and have the proper ardentance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
We have one opposed. Motion carries. So we'll go on for the ardentance here in just a minute. At this time, communications, you going to do those two?
Sure.
You only got two tonight.
Are they home together or separate?
I think we can do them together, Ken. Well, let's do the first one separate. I need a roll call on the first one.
Okay. 12A, Government Officials BBQ, September 12, 2018. Request from the Chamber of Commerce to hold the Government Officials BBQ at City Hall on Wednesday, September 12, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Alcoholic beverages will be served, subject to any required permits and licenses.
Okay, let me, before I ask for a motion, the chamber came to me and said that county states in September were really tough for them this year. And I said, well, we could possibly host it once I get permission, and then maybe we can rotate it between the county courthouse and here as we've, and they liked that idea. So I bring it to you tonight with that request coming from the Chamber of Commerce. Do I hear a motion to approve that? Alderman Schaefer, do I hear a second? Alderman Pousa, any questions now? This is no different than any, the couple events we've had. It'll be by invitation only. It's where the Chamber of Commerce recognizes the city officials and the county officials once a year, and some of our staff, and they host the barbecue. It's by invitation, and they have everything, they have the vendors here, and they'll have the proper catering license or whatever it needs to have to have it. And it's, it's all, it's given away, but it's by invitation only. So, everybody understand the question? I'm going to ask for a roll call, because it is kind of unique here at the City Hall.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries. You want to do the last one?
Sure. 12B, Children's Dyslexia Walkathon, October 6, 2018. Request from Children's Dyslexia Center of Southern Illinois to hold their annual walkathon Saturday, October 6, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Request the use of six trash toders and six picnic tables.
Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Consilla. Any questions? This has been going on for many years, and they really don't close any streets.
No street closures whatsoever.
And it's just basically to let us know that they're out in the west end on that date, and also they request the toders and picnic tables. All in favor of this, communications, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have no petitions, we have no resolutions. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the ardenances and read them by title only. And I guess, if nobody has a problem, we can certainly include the number, the one with ardentance number 8232, because I was just, I wanted to clarify. Is there any problem reading them as a group?
No.
So I'd ask for a motion to read ardentance 8225, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 8232, 8233, and 8234.
So move.
By title only and as a group. Alderman, Wellington, second by Alderman Schaefer. All in favor of reading by title only and as a group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
15A, Ardentance 8225, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 28 June 18, Kevin Bous. 15B, Ardentance 8226, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 29 June 18, Kevin Bous. 15C, Ardentance 8227, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 34 June 18, Dana Gravy, Sage Style. 15D, Ardentance 8228, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 38 July 18, Zales LLC Casa Maria. 15E, Ardentance 8229, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 39 July 18, Faith Family Life. 15F, Ardentance 8230, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 40 July 18, Solve Your System. 15G, Ardentance 8231, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 41 July 18, Grace Mancy, The Wine Garden. 15H, Ardentance 8232, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 42 July 18, Charles Cove JC Auto Sales. 15I, Ardentance 8233, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 43 July 18, Kevin Bous. 15J, Ardentance 8234, 2018. A zoning ordinance in regards to 44 July 18, Libation Lodge LLC, Curated and Cultured.
Do I hear a motion to approve those ardenances as just read? Alderman, Dittelman, second by Alderman, Consilla, and that is the ardenances 8225 through 8234 as just read by the city clerk. Is there any questions, additions, corrections? Roll call.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Ardentance is passed. We have no, any unfinished business. I don't know any. Miscellaneous and new business? I'd ask for a motion to approve the motor fuel claims in the amount of $52,523.75. Motion by Pousa, second by Consilla. Do I hear any discussion on the motor fuel claims? Roll call.
Gah?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask that we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, litigations, workers' compensation, property acquisition or transfer of property. I don't know that we're covering all of them, but that covers the whole gamut. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Schaefer, second by Steele. All in favor of going into executive session, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I do need to keep our HR director, our finance director... Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'll wait. Got to get us some roller skates. We are back in open session. And we do have two items of business to still accomplish tonight as it works out. At this time, I would ask for a motion to grant the administration and our attorneys permission to settle a workman's comp claim, and we're not going to go into all the details until it's settled, and then it'll be available, but for the amount of $20,832.96. Motion by Alderman, Wellington, second by Alderman, Schaefer. Discussion on the claim that we talked about, the person in question. This will give the attorneys a chance to get a signed document, and then it'll become public record. Any other further questions? Roll call.
Steele?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
That motion carries. And Erin, thank you, and we'll get this one wrapped up. The